We're looking at 6:15 and I'm going to look around and see if we can establish a quorum. We're here for a regular meeting of the Lake Ralph Hall zoning commission. It's October 16th, 2025. And I'm looking over there, John Ed Schimpfau is present. Commissioner Kolferg is present. Jan Johnson is present and I am present, judges here. Quorum established. Let's go ahead and begin with public comments. Anybody want to speak in public comments? Going, going, gone. Well, let's move on to agenda item number three. Discussion and possible action to approve minutes from August 14th, 2025 regarding meetings, regular meetings. You may come up, approach the podium, state your name and your address, Ms. Mayor.
Jan Cooper, City of Ladona. And just real quick, I'm in agreement with Upper Trinity and the previous subject we were speaking of, I should have got offended, but I just wanted to know what stood on that for the record.
Very good. Okay, well, let's move on and we're talking about minutes now. So everybody had a chance to look at the minutes.
I have looked at the minutes and I don't see, at least I didn't notice anything that needed to be corrected, so I'm willing to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 14th, 2025, and I have a copy of them right here.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Ms. Jan Johnson. We've got a second by Commissioner Kurt Vogelberg. That being said, let's go ahead and take a vote. Those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. John Ed Schimpfau.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogelberg.
Aye.
Jan Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
And your judge, well, I guess I'm the chairperson here. Your chairperson says aye. So motion passes. Let's go on and move on to agenda item number four. Discussion of possible action to move or amend section 5.01 of the Lake Ralph Hall zoning regulations for onsite sewage facilities OSSF requirements. And I think we have gone over what you were recommending. Ms. Hopkins, do you have anything else to add on this subject?
No.
Okay, that'll shorten it, sir. Come on up, state your name, or you don't even have to do that, Mr. Janeway.
Yes, sir.
We'll recognize you.
Thank you so much, Doug Janeway, Upper Trinity Regional Water District. I would, I don't know where that was printed up as far as the options that were offered up, hadn't had a chance to really look at them. We have, Upper Trinity has offered up, and this is the item for the either strike to 501 or some other alternate. Okay, we'll make sure you got the right one. And so.
Or leave it as it is.
I would like to hand out again the, what we've offered up as an amendment to that section. I believe we've reviewed this. Our original contract of the county provides for, I believe, the flexibility for this committee to review developments to make sure whether or not they can comply with this prohibition on OSSFs on developments. I want to reiterate again that folks that own a piece of property, one piece of property, when you build a house, these are not the requirements for you. You're still allowed to do your OSSF. We would ask that you not be allowed to spray, same way you do around Richmond Chambers and also Cedar Creek. We did recognize and we are offering to exempt also developments with five acre lots. Those are, we feel those will be spread out enough that, and enough coverage to allow for a safe use of OSSFs in those areas. Same thing with the 20 acre limitation, we would just go with the 20 lots. Again, you always have, as a committee, the opportunity to review this when someone comes in with a plan. But if you strike it, they will not make any plans to do this. And so they will, they will just go with OSSFs because we know that developers, their pure nature is profit. I'm familiar with one development around another lake locally where essentially the developer has built roads, water, and sold lots and set up an HOA and I believe they're going to be gone and you can build a house if you want to.
Being a developer is a hit and run operation.
Definitely hit and run operation. And I'm going to say Fannin County and Upper Trinity are not hit and run, we're going to be here for the duration. And so when problems arise, those developers who, and we can all get their addresses, they're from Tennessee, they're out of state, and when they're selling lots at, you know, half a million dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars for a lot, and they didn't spend that much to build, to buy the land or build the lots, that profit is going into their company and they're going to cash those checks back in Tennessee. And nobody from Fannin County, other than some tax revenue, is going to profit, is going to benefit from those developers being here. And they'll be gone and we'll all be left holding the bag on that one. So I think what we've offered up is reasonable, is a good compromise. We are hopeful that this committee will agree with us. It may not be exactly what the county was thinking about, but we have to remember that this lake is not like the other lake. We have to remember that the county is not, you are getting experience now with lakes, but you don't have experience other than Lake Bonham. Other counties have had this experience, other water districts have had this experience. We meet with water districts frequently and on a regular basis, and so this is a problem in other lakes too. And so I know that Fannin County has its focus here, but there are other lakes in the state who face similar issues. We're trying to get on the front end of it so you're not having to retrofit things. So if you just cancel the rules, it's really hard to go back and implement those rules later because it's going to be too late at that point. I want to correct a couple of statements that were made by Commissioner Johnson here about water releases in Lake Ralph Hall. Yes, there are two spillways. One spillway is around the north end where if it gets in a flood, if you're in a flood situation, it goes unregulated across into Baker Creek out the back of the north end of the dam. That's an unregulated, uncontrolled spillway. Our other spillway, which is in the center, you see those two big concrete, there's a gap in the middle, that gap in the middle is going to be what's called a weir style spillway. It is also a fixed spillway. There is no mechanical gates that are moving up and down to let water out. We have no requirement from TCEQ to let water out of the dam to keep fish alive, you know, all the things that you, environmental things that you have to do to replicate that water release downstream. We don't have that requirement in ours. Other lakes do have that, so it's a very important difference to make is that there can be water going, there will be water going over both spillways, primarily over the one in the middle of the dam, which is the regular spillway, and it's at 551, okay, that's our conservation pool. And then we have, and then the other one, I can't remember, it's like 554, it's several feet above that. And that's for the hundred year, when the hundred year flood comes, that's to let it out so it doesn't go without the dam. That's the emergency spillway and the regular spillway. When we say releases of water, there's not a release of water, it's just going over the top of the spillway in the center of the dam. There's no mechanical gates you're opening and closing. So that's, I want to make sure that's an important difference to make in other lakes because other lakes do have those gates, they open and close, let water out when they're required to. The second point I wanted to correct from Commissioner Johnson here was, he talked about gobert mud and the water districts having to pay for this sewer. Okay, I understand the way these develop, and it's already starting to happen here, is that there will be a developer, he will create a mud or some sort of a bonding type of a structure, like I'm calling a super HOA, but it'll be a mud, like they've already known the Johnson property, already did, they went out, legislation got there and approved. Those developers can then go in and they can sell bonds and they can build all this infrastructure and then they can charge back to their developer, to their homeowners, it's like a separate fee on top of it.
They get their money upfront and the homeowners end up paying off the bondholders.
That's right, and that's a new trick they started a few, you know, several years ago. But ultimately what happens is it's not the mud paying for that. It'll be the developer paying for it and those homeowners in that development, they will pay for it through assessments on their property over and above taxes. So you won't be costing gobert mud any money for a water sewer, a sewer treatment plant, that'll be only the developer to do that. And so that's an important difference and they'll also have money if you need, if they need to provide water and you need to have, you know, some improvements made, that's when you negotiate those things.
Okay, well, I was confused. I'm confused, Mr. Janeway, because when I asked you about this before, about doing the wastewater, you specifically told me that the developers will pay for that. Now you're telling me that the developers are going to have the homeowners pay for that.
They necessarily have to pay for it. They could go with individual lots, you know, OSF on the individual lots.
Right.
So you could end up with it not being done through a mud or one of these municipal development programs, or you could end up with the developer not putting it in and you could end up falling on independent homeowners. Now, we don't have a lot of regulations that allow us to control some of these things. Although the lake zone, we do, so we've got a little bit of flexibility there, but there are three ways this thing can cut. And the question is, you know, what's going to be best for development? What's going to be best for the future? Those are open questions and we need all the information to make those sorts of decisions.
And I have no problem with everything Ladonia is doing. I am supporting them 100%. They are already prepared to move forward into wastewater and everything, but you totally such as mine, this is where my question is coming from, is we want to get water to these undeveloped areas. In any other situation we've been in, wastewater was not the key issue. The key issue was getting them water and to me, that is Fannin County, that should still be the key issue and TCEQ recognizes OSSF as a quality wastewater management system.
They also recognize, and I handed this commission a month or two ago, the harm that those can cause to lakes. They made those findings, I've given them to you, and they made those findings that these OSSFs around lakes are harmful for lakes and they gave us control.
If they are not properly maintained and cared for, and we have systems in place for that.
I'm just saying that TCEQ has ruled on that already and they made the ruling, for whatever reason, whether it's maintained or not maintained, that they gave the ability for that district to control around the lake that they don't have spray.
And in your repairing area and your buffer area, I agree with you with that and everything that Ladonia is trying to do because they are in a position to already do, they already have wastewater treatment.
Yeah, let me just, so on that issue, so right now Ladonia has its city limits, these zoning requirements are not, we're talking about outside of Ladonia. Ladonia cannot force anyone to, the way they said our reason, I'm not going to be, let me say this, like the city council person here, I don't believe that Ladonia can force anyone to annex another property into their area.
I think, yeah, I think that the lake, Upper Trinity has the right under the contract, as I understand it, to force Ladonia to annex all their property. That's my understanding of what the agreement provides.
We're talking about.
That's something like 3,000 acres, if I understand it correctly.
We're not talking, we're talking, you're talking about Upper Trinity's land, we're talking about private property, there's no.
You've got a lot of riparian property around the lake, which is unusual. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying that Ladonia could end up with a substantial area that it's going to have to provide water and sewage for. If the lake, and when I say the lake, I'm talking about Upper Trinity determines it wants to do that.
Well, let me clarify something here. So the area that Upper Trinity owns, except for the visitor center property up on 34, the three boat ramps we have, areas around the dam, all those areas are in the, below 560, which was in our operational area for the lake. There's no building going on and down those areas, no buildings or sewer systems going on down there. So if we, we have no control over what the private property, we're talking about private property, this is, these are for subdivision development.
I understand that, but I wanted people to understand that a lot of the property that Upper Trinity owns is not in the flood area, it's up above the flood area.
Yes, sir.
And I understand that's something like 3,000 acres, is that wrong?
I don't know, I don't think I've done the kind of the calculation, I mean acres are outside the flood area, but in the area around the lake that's in this zoning area, I think most of that's in the, in the 560. A few scattered properties, I mentioned four of them right there, you have our headquarters property or the visitor center, we have the three boat ramp areas, we have some areas around the dam, we have a little canoe lock area up on.
Yeah, I don't need the exact number, I just want people to realize that that is there and that you do have the ability under the contracts, as I understand it, with the city of Ladonia, to require the city of Ladonia to annex all your property.
I think we're mixing metaphors here because.
I think what he's trying to.
If I can just finish my thought, thank you. We are, we are talking about subdivisions on private property. Forget about Upper Trinity's land, we do own property, we're not going to install these septic systems to pollute our own lake, we're not, we're not even going to be building down there. And so we're not, obviously, we don't have concern over what we do because we're the ones protecting the lake, we're the only ones protecting the lake. And so we're not going to do that. So the things we're talking about here are subdivisions being built and how do you deal with subdivisions? We're not building subdivisions on our property, okay? We're going to build our visitor center and guess what? We're building water and sewer connections from our visitor center up here to Ladonia. So we're doing what we're saying.
Yeah, but I remember back with your original zoning that was proposed, you would have the right to develop commercial centers and other things on your property around the lake. Am I missing something?
Yeah, let me clarify that because we, in this, again, we're kind of getting into red herrings here because at one time, and we've come, we've passed all this, we've fixed this, we agree with the county, we fixed all the things, we had a catch-all zoning category for everything around the lake in one zoning category and we agreed with y'all to change that and define those specific areas around, and we did that and we're okay, we're passing this, that's the appointment.
We will talk, when I was looking at the shoreline plan, it didn't seem to read that way. So that's what raised issues for me again, looking at some of your maps.
That's the next item.
Scripters, I know.
We need to go, we need to save that for then, we have lots of questions.
My understanding, it was yours if we had it put to rest, but when I read this over, I saw some things in here that caused me to question whether that was understood and you're telling me it is.
You're telling me it is understood. We're not going to go against the law. So we know what zoning is, that's the law.
Can I ask Ms. Johnson a question?
Sure.
Does gobert mud even get into the 5,000 foot?
Yes, we do.
Okay, let me switch subjects, I think we filled.
Well, I was making a, I was trying to make an, I was trying to offer an amendment.
Well, come ahead, I was going to go to your second point, which was about water and we can talk to that, go ahead and finish up.
Okay, so I had, I proposed, and not I, Upper Trinity has proposed something acceptable to us and you see the underlying areas are words that, the blue areas are words that are added and the red strike throughs are obviously the strike throughs and you see the replacements, I'm sorry, not the blue, the red underlined are added words and the red strike throughs are the ones we struck. And so we made some very minor but important changes to this, to this chapter and if you would adopt this, we would be agreeable, we would be agreeable with this and we would be done with this whole issue. And you still have, as a zoning committee, you still have the ability for these developers come forward and go, hey, we can't make this work and you can decide at that time, but to throw the whole baby out with the bathwater is, I'm going to say, an extreme approach and you lose the ability to check.
I understand your point of that and I think that's why we've got Ms. Hopkins recommending several alternatives and one of them may more roughly correspond to what Upper Trinity is proposing.
And we haven't had a chance to look it over and digest that we've had.
It sounds like you need an opportunity to look at what Ms. Hopkins is proposed. Obviously you can't do that tonight and I think we need to digest this a little bit, but is that everything you have to say on this particular aspect? I wanted to ask you a couple of things about.
Am I done with this, this item or the next item?
Well, we're, I'm back on your, talking about release over the dam.
Oh, okay, yes, sir.
This is still on what you were talking about and I don't want to disclose too much about my past, but I was a kayaker. And kayakers, we were always looking for water coming.
Don't get close to the dam.
We were looking for water coming over the dam and if we had a dam that had release, we would be looking to see if they were releasing. If we had a dam that would overflow, we wanted to make sure there was enough rain that we could be sure we got a class three ride or class four ride down the river and we wore helmets. Now, I would ask you this, I'm back to, do I go up here to go kayaking? And my question to you is how many times a year because of the rain is this dam going to release water and how does that compare to somebody like the people up, you know, north on the brasses that release on a schedule? How often do you release a year, a typical year is compared to what the dam was doing north up on the brasses?
Well, the answer to your question is there's, it's a fixed dam, there's nothing there for us to control, it's either going to rain or.
That's not my question. If it's a typical year and you got rain, how many times is it going to flow?
How many times is it going to rain? Who knows that question?
Well, I think there's averages that will give you information as to how often that happens.
I don't have the answer for you, I will say as far as kayakers.
And I'll give you an idea, if the dam that has a release on it doesn't get enough rain, they can't release. If it's a drought, they're not going to be able to release because it's not going to come up to the release level. So I want to know, you're telling me that we've got a problem with, you know, algae bloom because our water doesn't overflow the dam often enough and I haven't seen the metrics on that, which would allow me to make a decision as to what the facts actually were.
Well, you can look at the, I mean, if you drive across the old 34 River Bridge every day, like I have for quite a while.
Come on in, Mr. Duckworth.
We have, there are many days that there's no water in that and so I would say, just like yesterday, when the water's not running, there's no water, it'll be less than it is now because most of that's going to be caught, of course, and so you're not going to be running, I don't have a metric on how many times it goes over the spillway, but it's not going to be, there's no, there's no way to control if it goes over or not. I will say for those kayakers though, we're going to have part of the shoreline, Lake and Shoreline Management Plan, we're going to have buoys and so I hope the sheriff partners out there saying, don't get out there, Judge, because you're going to go off a.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'm not going to be kayaking, it'd be down below the dam, not up above it.
It's a vertical drop, so if you do that, you're going to go about 30 feet down and it won't be, it won't be a good.
My helmet wouldn't help.
It won't be a good landing, you're both going to be shattered at that point, but, you know, so you're not supposed to be around those areas, obviously going to be buoyed off and safety and those are prohibited zones to be, so, but, yes, sir.
I just, I think the distinction to make or that I understand is at Lake Ralph Hall, you're dealing with a fixed emergency spillway. I mean, the ground.
They're all fixed.
The ground's however high it is and you're, in the middle, you've got a fixed spillway, it's not mechanical.
Correct.
At Bodark, you're requiring, well, you're, Bodark, North Texas is required by law or by EPA, TCEQ permit to continually release X amount of water to provide for downstream habitat.
I can't speak to what their permit says, but I could only say ours does not require that because we have.
No, I know you're, but I, but I know there's.
Yeah, many lakes, many lakes are just like you're saying because they're having water coming in and they're, they have to replicate that plug downstream.
Even if they don't have it coming in.
I know, they still have to do it, yeah, they still have to do it, correct.
Canyon Lake is a.
But it has to be released.
John Ed, Canyon Lake is a primary example where the rice farmers get their water even if there's no water in the lake.
Yeah. I mean, many lakes are that way, that's their permit requirements. Ours is not that way because the, it's a dry riverbed except when it rains and so that was, it's important to note that because that makes us different than all these other lakes. I can't think of one of them that, I mean, I, you know, maybe there are one out there, I don't know, but I'm not aware of it.
Well, you've addressed the issue for me, but again, I'm interested in the metrics and how often does that thing need to spill over to keep algae bloom from happening during a period of time? And those are questions that I ask myself and in turn I'm asking you and if you've got evidence that clears that up, that would help me.
I don't think, I don't know that I've seen that answer or that question posed before, but I wouldn't think it's enough to wash things out, but it is a, we brought the folks here a few meetings ago and they showed what happens on the spectrum of the elements in the water that cause algae blooms and there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a fine line where you look, it's all looking good and all of a sudden you hit that point and it's a point of no return. I mean, if you, if you have a swimming pool, let's go a different example, you've got a swimming pool at your house and you go away for the weekend, you forgot to put some chlorine in there and you come back and it's totally green and it's hard to get it back. So you have to put a lot of chemicals in it to make it come back. So it's a deal that's where it looks good until it doesn't and when it doesn't, you got a problem, it's hard to fix. We're trying on the front end of it to fix this problem before we get there. Commissioner, Upper Trinity has, Upper Trinity has offered an amendment to what the county has offered up or an alternate, what county, the county has proposed that we either strike it or they list off three alternatives.
Strike it, amend it, or leave it as it is.
And they've got some language I haven't seen before. This is the same language we've provided this committee several times since February of last year.
This is what DICE.
And so we're asking this committee to, Upper Trinity would be agreeable to what I'm showing to you right there. We would not be, we would be against striking of the whole chapter and the other, I could look at these others, see if we have an idea, but we know we're okay with that and there are minor changes to it and I believe they're very important minor changes that allow development to occur and still allow this committee to see developments come in and make a decision whether or not it's feasible or not feasible.
What I would say to you is we've got choices here and they seem to be clear and that's probably something we kick up to Commissioners Court for them to make a choice from these provisions. That'll give everybody time to digest this a little more in the Commissioners Court level and we don't want to recommend something to Commissioners Court. If we've got alternatives, I think we recommend the alternatives and we let the Commissioners Court pick the alternative they want to put into place. That's my read on this. Now, I don't know how the rest of the committee feels, we, you know, I'm not in a position to recommend that we don't do it or that we do do it. And I think we've got choices here in the Commissioners Court, there's obvious, you do nothing or you put in a rule that allows you to provide a variance if appropriate and then you've got several things in the middle and you're talking about parsing language. You haven't studied DICE yet with a lot of time, I don't think DICE study.
Well, she's had that since February, probably.
Okay, well, I think, I think the, I think the Commissioners Court needs to see it, that's where I'm at. I think we can have further discussion and comments, but I want to share upfront where I am on all this at this point in time.
I think we need to have a direct deal to give to the Commissioners Court of one of these three tonight. I mean, that's what we said the last meeting, we were going to make a decision and by golly we need to make a decision.
But we're having our first public hearing tonight, don't we have to have another one before we can make?
The next public hearing would be for Commissioners Court and it is set already.
It is set, okay. I have, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Janeway, as we talked about your contract before. In your contract in section six, it talks about the county desires to have, to take a leadership role in the epigemic development in the. a leadership role in the economic development in this area. Also, I was reading, and I was looking for it because I didn't mark it, so I can't find it, but there's supposed to be a lake advisory panel.
Yeah, we had that.
That's supposed to have a member of Fannin County on it. I know I'm late to the game, but I haven't heard anything about this lake advisory panel. I haven't seen anything from this lake advisory panel. I would like to know who was on it, where are the minutes, and what it has to do with all of this stuff coming together. I've never even heard of them.
I think, yes, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, that's it. So I wanted to know, because this is part of the contract, and you say you've fulfilled everything of this contract, but I've never heard of this panel, and I realize I'm late to the game. Have anybody else on the Commissioners?
Let me ask Jan if she, Jan, were you on that committee? Were you looking at the advisory committee or was that, I remember. There was a committee out there, I mean, there was a committee, I was before I was here.
Do we have, do we have minutes? Do we have things from?
I don't know. I don't, I'm not sure if we do or not.
I want to know, I want to know about the lake advisory panel. And, and, believe me, I am not against what you're suggesting. I am not against amending things to make it, but my job is to look after Fannin County. And that includes Ladona. And while I wasn't overly concerned, I really find it very difficult, but if Upper Trinity did decide to annex all of their property into Ladona, once a city has property, they have a responsibility, and I know this from being Melissa, they have a responsibility to provide services. That puts developers and everything else out of it. If it's already annexed in, they have to provide water, they have to provide sewer, they have to provide all of these things because they are a city. Me as Gober Mud, I don't have to provide it unless they provide the infrastructure because I, they know that muds and suds don't have the money that cities do or the tax base that cities do. So Ms., our chairman has brought up a question that I think is important for Ladona to think about. And if we are going to have, this is a 25-year contract, so it's gonna be up in 2033. In 2033.
That's the county, so the.
It's the one with Ladona and the county. It's a, it's a joint, it's a joint contract.
It's two contracts.
Okay, well, I guess.
Ladona is, is 2004, I think it might have been 40 years, maybe.
2004, so it's older than this, oh, okay, so I thought you.
It's a longer term.
I thought you were saying that this, okay.
I don't have a copy of that one.
Okay, but that's, I haven't even, I haven't even seen that. And I'm trying to do a good job for Fannin County. I, I know y'all are here to do a good job for us. I know that is your intent, but my intent is to look after the county. So my question is, while you are encouraging them to do wastewater and stuff, have you done anything to help them get the funding needed for a water treatment plant? Because that's what they're gonna need first, to provide water to Fannin County. Because they aren't just gonna provide it for Ladona, they're gonna be selling it to eventually the Gober Mud and everything else. So with a, with a contract that expires in six years, is that water treatment plant gonna be?
That's maybe the Fannin, that's not the Ladona contract. You're looking, that's not, that's a different contract.
Okay, but there is a time limit past which the, your Upper Trinity does not have to provide water to Ladona. And what I'm asking you now, I'm not talking about your ability to go ahead and extend it. My question to you is, when does that requirement dissipate? When is it no longer in effect? And I think it's not that far out. If we're talking about a 40-year agreement, we're going back to 2004, you know, 2008, 2004.
Forty-four.
And, and that's if it's 40 years. And I don't necessarily recall it being 40 years. Do you have a document you can show me that says it's 40 years?
It's on the website, I think it's on the, I think it's on Ladona's website, if you wanna look at it. I don't have it with me, no, sir.
He said, I, I, I want to work with you. I want to partnership with.
So let me ask this question, so let me, let me address part of that because you mentioned a couple of things. You know, your, your, your duty here is to protect Fannin County.
Correct.
Okay. Our duty here is to, obviously, to provide clean water. But I, this is one of my slides, I don't know why it rolled to this slide because I didn't do it, it just rolled there, it's like the third slide. That's not our plan. If you read there, you know, the goal of that plan, and it's our goal, is to provide, while we're protecting the water quality.
Is that in this, is this in the?
Yes, it's in, maybe. Yeah, I think, yeah, it's like second page or something. So it is in there, yes, it sure is. You see, it's got two things there. You got water quality, and you have all the things, all the other things are the things that Fannin County wants and needs, we agreed to. Okay, so when we made a contract, we wanted quality water. We brought the lake, the funding, all that to the county. I don't believe that Fannin County or the cap.
Hold on, let me, let me say this.
Okay, go ahead, yes, sir.
Everybody wants a place they can get water. Don't make it sound like you did us a favor. You benefited from this, your water folks benefited from it more than Fannin County did. They were people up here who would rather things not to have changed. So you don't make it sound like you're doing us a favor.
What I'm saying to you.
Upper Trinity would have been here as gladly as you are.
If you, if you remember now, I mean, you weren't involved, the folks at Ladona were involved when we first came. We were asked to come here.
You were asked to come here because the person, I understand it, who was in charge of Upper Trinity had a place out here. My understanding.
I think that's true.
No, he wasn't out here.
Before that.
I thought he was involved with it, and that's one of the reasons it came here. Don't, I have a general understanding of the history behind what happened here.
Right. We can go back and pull the history on that, and we have some folks that are involved in it, but.
I, well, let me say this. I'm not arguing with you about it's good for Fannin County that you're here and are going to work with us. What I'm arguing with you is you didn't do us a favor.
I'm just trying to explain that there's, there's benefits on both sides, is what I'm trying to explain. We're talking about Commissioner Johnson's role is to protect the county, okay? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna argue that part of that role is to have good water for that lake.
And I am doing that.
You don't want to have a polluted lake, so.
I do have good water for that lake. I fully believe that an OSSF is a wonderful individual home water treatment system. My difference with you is that a developer's gonna come in, and they're going to put in single-family homes. That single-family home is gonna be on at least one acre, which is our requirement for an OSSF. They are putting in single-family homes. I don't think that single-family home should be differentiated just because a developer built it instead of the homeowner building it, buying it after it's built. That, I think that they still deserve an individual water treatment system. But that is where we differ, and we keep trying to talk about it, and, and that's fine, but I'm just, so I'm looking after not just the individual homeowners, I'm looking after the revenue of Fannin County. We are providing good quality water with a well-maintained and inspected OSSF that meets all of TCEQ requirements. And our Economic Development Director, our.
I don't think she's the economic development director, I think she's.
OSSF, yeah. Both of these have had certification from TCEQ to maintain water quality, and they have improved every lake we have here. Why do you question our ability to provide quality water? Because you have decided OSSFs, because former traditional conventional systems have failed, does not mean that our OSSFs will fail. Because we are aerobic, and we are fine to go with no drip and stay out of the repairing area. I'm willing for that compromise because I do want good quality water. But we seem to be dividing on what you're calling a development and what I'm calling single-family homes. I don't care who builds them, I care who owns them.
Well, we care who flushes the toilet and where it goes.
That's the, that's the, that's the, that's the owner, that's the owner.
Mechanism of getting that treated, let me just, another thing about OSSFs, and I'm not, I mean, Fannin County does their job. Well, they, well, I mean, TC, they know it's a reality of a lot of rural areas.
And why do you not accept it's a reality for our rural area? I think that's where.
We brought, that's why, that's why we had the study done, that's why we brought the engineers down here to explain all that. I'm not, I'm not the engineer. We've, we've, we've spent several meetings bringing that information forward to you. And so, you know, I can't offer any additional scientific evidence to you that that's not the case. I will say this, important point is that the OSSFs are only regulated, so once a year, or four times a year, no, three, four, three.
Three.
Three times a year, you have a guy comes out, and he works the system, makes sure it's operating correctly, and he sends a report to them, to the county.
It also has sensors and alarms and.
It just tells you when the, when the, when the air's not working. Alarm goes off, telling you the pump's not working, something's not working, like the irrigation part of it.
And, and that would be what would cause a failure, right? So it is.
No, it's just gonna make it, it's gonna, yeah, it will not longer be pumping air into the aerobic piece. You have different kinds, but I don't, I don't get into detail. But my point in here is, my point is that the regulation at the county level is that an individual, a contractor, which I'm not saying they're bad, I'm saying that there is, an individual goes out, he looks at it, he sees if it's operating correctly, and he sends a report saying, a system okay. And I think there's, what was the other thing they have, it's got chlorine in it, okay? When you have a treatment plant, just, Ladona knows this, you have a treatment plant, those reports go to TCEQ, you gotta test for a lot more stuff. And you have an agency who has different level of enforcement on a treatment plant versus a sewage plant, or a, a, an OSSF. Okay, so if you have, this develops out, okay, you got a staff of, how many folks you have watching septic?
Three.
Three people?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you got three people. I think there was something like, how many lots been up on Bodark? 600 already, 800 lots, something?
Probably about four, yeah, well.
There's plats out there for 600, 800 lots on the books or in the process or whatever. There's already, how many do you have already today? How many septic systems, how many septic licenses or permits do you have out there?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand?
But where for?
For the entire county. How many, how many, how many OSSF systems y'all licensed, or currently licensed in the county of Fannin County?
But most of those systems aren't around a lake, we're talking about.
I'm just asking, my point's something different.
Yeah, what's, so what's your point?
My point is, how many do you have? You got a thousand, 10,000?
But, but they're not conducting the inspections.
I got you.
Their inspections, I wonder, if you want to ask how many people are conducting the inspections.
Oh, we don't do the inspections.
Right, that's my, that's my.
They tabulate the sworn inspections that are certified, and people are licensed to do.
Got it, I understand that, because I have one, too. I understand how it works. And my point is that, yes, you have folks that are doing that, you're gonna be adding, you're gonna be adding all these around here, too, and they're getting $25 a year?
It's not about, it's not about the money for the county, Mr. Janeway.
I know, but you have to, you have to, you have to hire people to do it, okay? So you gotta have enough money to hire people to do the paperwork for it.
The homeowner pays more than that, the county only gets a portion of what they receive. They are well-paid to go out and do a thorough, safe inspection.
They don't do inspections, the, the.
The individuals that go out and do them are paid more than $25.
Yeah, right, I know that, yes, I know.
They get paid, but you were saying, oh, they only make $25, that is not true.
I'm saying that county oversight is only $25. Yes, I, they're like, you know, several.
And we trust our inspectors, but let's not go there.
So my point, my point is.
I don't want to argue with you because I'm in favor of what you're wanting, good quality water.
Yeah, my point is that the TCEQ has a higher level of requirements and reporting than any OSSF.
And their enforcement is terrible, terrible, terrible.
I don't know.
I don't, I'm not even.
I've worked it pretty good.
They do a pretty good job of monitoring us out here.
And, and that's, so I want to talk about Ladona. Yes, I agree, long-term, Ladona is in position, and we encourage anyone that is close to them to contact Ladona about annexing. Do you feel that most of the initial growth in Lake Ralph Hall will be around the Ladona area?
I believe water and wastewater will, will play a very vital role in where they develop first because it's available. Yes, so I, I believe that. Now, if that, if some developer somewhere else bought some cheap land and do something different, and he puts a back shovel, he could do that.
And usually, and usually, the developers that are gonna do that in the smaller municipalities are gonna be, follow under your 20, your poverty rules. So we're, we're, well, I'm not through yet.
Sorry.
So we are in favor of what Ladona is trying to do. We are in favor of the long-range plan for Lake Hall, right, Lake Ralph Hall, to have these systems. But that is future, not now. We are rural, we are country, we don't have water out there. But Ladona is in a better position, and my concern for Ladona, and this is my personal concern for Ladona, is how long is it gonna take them to get that water treatment plant? And is trying to put in all these wastewater plants going to cause an issue? But that's Ladona's problem.
They have, they have capacity right now.
Yes, Mr. Duckworth here now.
Yes, he, we do.
Everybody's waiting to hear what you have to say.
Well, I certainly appreciate that and your patience. It, it certainly is our strategic position and, and vision that we would want to share the expense of our sewage facilities with new development. So we would want to encourage new development to be connected to our sewage facilities rather than permitting onsite sewage facilities. It's, it simply broadens the base and shares the cost across a larger population, right? We're required to maintain that facility for the customers that we have, and we have capacity. We also have capacity, as I understand it, on our water system. So there is not an immediate emergent need for us to treat surface-level water for distribution to Ladona. Obviously, again, strategically, it makes sense to get to a position to do that for our neighbors in this corner of Fannin County. And Mr. Janeway and I have discussed opportunities to apply for Texas grants that may help further that strategic plan.
When we talked to Upper Trinity initially, they were talking about coming in and doing the sewage.
Judge, would you please see if we can control the panel down there?
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, Upper Trinity was talking about accomplishing some of this early on. And you're telling me that Ladona is now willing, maybe not able, but willing and ready to attempt to accomplish this? And I guess how far does that zone of accomplishment extend?
Judge, can I make a correction on that? Because I, you may, I'm not, I'm not sure if I was in that conversation or not, but if I was, I need to correct the record on that. And our, and our record there has been clear from day one, is that we are happy to help the local folks, help them with finding funding and where we can assist them, but we've never committed to building sewer treatment plants or water treatment plants. But we're happy to help our, our friends, and we, I think they'll tell you that we've helped them quite a bit, so.
You're telling me initially.
If I was in a conversation, that wasn't the right.
I don't think you were involved in that conversation. But I, I guess what I'm asking you.
That might be what you heard, but.
You're, you're willing to help, but you're not willing to.
When I say help, locate funding.
And my understanding, it was represented to me that you do operate sewage treatment facilities.
We do, yes, sir, we sure do, water and both.
And the concept that I heard initially was you would be putting them up here, and what I'm hearing now is you wouldn't put it up, you would look to Ladona, and you would assist them in doing it. And I'm assuming that assistance.
Well, this, the assumptions here, let's clarify these because we've got multiple things happening here. Ladona already has a sewer treatment plant, they don't need another one, as far, right now, as far as I know. These other areas in Northside Lake, there would be need for water treatment over there. Those developers will need to put that in as part of their project. Water treatment, we, we provide raw water at a spigot at the corner of their property. at a spigot at the corner of their property. Uh, if they decide to build a water treatment plant, then we're happy to help them locate money, because anytime you have funding, it's gonna be paid for by the people who drink that water. And so that's how it works, is you pay back those, uh, those funds back to, back to the entity.
My understanding to put in a water treatment plant right now, even a small one, would be north of ten million dollars. Is that correct?
I, I couldn't tell you what you're, what, what you're looking at, I don't know.
There's actually something, um, came out today, October the fifteenth.
Well, that's timely.
Sherman unveiled a new multimillion-dollar waste treatment plant. Um, the home of the new wastewater plant was a two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-million project, but the entire infrastructure upgrade costed, uh, cost of the city five-hundred million to complete.
That's, that's information that doesn't apply here, but thank you.
Yeah, again, this is, we're not looking to add a wastewater treatment plant, we have those facilities.
Except not in the areas.
Not on the north, on the north.
Ladona is not on the north, they're on the south. The, the, the north side's gonna be, those developers will create those muds, they'll operate those things eventually. The way it's worked over in Denton County and other areas, Collin County, those kinda areas, those muds will go in, and they'll have those individual plants. Eventually, they will link them together, and it'll go to somewhere, 'cause you have enough, you have enough...
But your regulations don't allow for the individual package plant.
I don't think it prohibits it, I don't recall it prohibiting that, but...
It says it has to be attached to a centralized sewage system, that's what our complaint is.
Well, I mean, we, we've always allowed for a cen, for, uh, treatment, treatment plants, so. That's your divi, that's your, that's, you've come up with a, with a definition that I'm not familiar with.
The verdict that is in currently does not allow package plants.
I don't, I don't agree with that, but...
Well, I wanna see, I wanna see the language and...
That's right there, we've given the language.
Well, this, you know, where does this say that you can have separate treatment plants? Do we wanna put a provision in providing that?
I think it's in the...
Would you have a problem having that provision in here, providing that you have...
No, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay, well, that's, those are some of the questions I'm asking.
I don't think it, I don't think it was ever something that, that's, that's dealing with individual property.
Okay, well, I haven't had an opportunity to review everything with that in mind. I'm an attorney, I like to read, I like to look at things, and I'm saying, would you mind that provision being in?
No, I wouldn't mind that provision.
Okay, well, now, what I would ask you, look at his, what provisions do you want in there, so we can recommend it to the Commissioners' Court? I, I agree with...
We, we don't believe that's prohibited on the current regulation.
Okay, well, then what is the line in here saying that it's not prohibited? How does that affect you?
I don't know where it's coming from, to be honest with you.
Okay, now, well, the, the question is, you're telling me that certain things aren't prohibited. You're telling me we can provide a variance, if we think it's difficult for somebody to put something in, let's have that line here. I wanna see it in conjunction with this. Do you have a problem with that? If you don't, I think we're sailing to the strengths of Geraldo.
All right, I don't think we're, I don't think we have a problem with that sense to it, that you're allowed to have individual package plants for a development.
And that we can have variances if we decide...
That's already in there.
Yeah, the variance.
That is in there.
That's already in there, yes, sir.
Well, that's what I wanna be sure of.
That's the language that's in there today, it's already there.
Okay, well, let's, let's, you know, I, I have no problem with what Cur's proposing, if we can get it done, is get some, a clear proposal to Commissioners' Court.
We'd be happy with what we propose, and you had the language that, uh, individual package plants are, are allowable.
And this is the amendment.
That's it, right there, yes, sir.
Will the Chair entertain a motion?
You've got, uh, the Chair is ready to entertain a motion.
So I move that, that we accept this redline onsite facility OSSF under 5.01 with the following changes. I move that we decrease five acres to two acres, and my rationale on that is TECQ allows a half acre, county wants one acre, Upper Trinity wants five, I feel two acres as a compromise. I also would add language that separate or individual package plants, however you wanna word that, would also be allowed. I have no problem with, um, the language of surface irrigation for a fluid prohibited, could be drip, the drip, the underground drip, we just...
We've got, we've got a motion, and Doug, I want you to know that I do see you guys as somebody who can be here, and I do see developers as passing in the night, carrying off a bag of money. You're not in that category, don't get me, don't get me wrong. We've got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by John Ed Schimpf, and we've got a second by Commissioner Fogelberg. And that being done, uh, if there's no further discussion...
I just have one thing. With those amendments by, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Schimpf, um, is it something that you feel the Upper Trinity will accept, or will it negate this Lake Shore Plan?
Uh, I can't speak for the board, what they might accept. I, I know we're, I know we've approved the five-acre limit.
But you won't go to...
And also, the five-acre limit, uh, if you look at the zoning map, it, uh, that five-acre limit goes to certain, uh, zoning areas that, that's your zoning category.
That are way far away.
No, that's your zoning category. You have, you have one acre, you got half acre, one acre, and five acre, uh, requirements, and so...
I can make it one acre to make it...
Well, we're not, I mean, I, I know for sure that's what we, uh...
To make it go along with the...
I know we will not be agreeable with that, I, I know that for a fact.
The one acre that was involved is the Fannin County OSSF regulation that has been approved by the...
That doesn't really get us anywhere, to be honest with you. We need five acres with us, we're...
Yeah, I think the two acres is there.
I'll leave it at two then, if we need to go back and relook at the way we're...
And, and they may, you know, we've got a board here, uh, they can, you know, this, we were supposed to have an approved plan, this isn't approved by the board, it's a discussion plan. So, uh, yeah, I think, I think we need to go ahead and get...
So I'll leave it at, I'll leave it at two with the inclusion of package plans.
Yeah, and I think we've got your motion, and we've got a second.
Another point of discussion, if I could, just to, to go on record. I think anything that allows for a decrease in cost sharing on our onsite, or on our sewer facilities by allowing OSSFs, um, is inherently a cost increase for the residents of Ladona, because as those costs continue to increase, and as developers and individual home builders are allowed to build OSSFs, those costs are no longer shared by all the residents of the community.
And I would counter that with the fact that if you go to five acres and the developer buys a hundred acres of land, or five hundred acres of land, and is restricted to five acres, and ultimately has to put in the sewer system there instead of an OSS, he's gonna pass that cost into his lots and along to the families and the folks that would own those houses out in the county.
Even though Upper Trinity at their own expense is installing lift stations in that shed.
Do I know anything about lift stations?
I've not seen that in writing.
I haven't either.
We are currently under design.
Okay, well, one thing that we have seen in writing is a recommendation from an engineering firm that says they discourage OSSFs, and that's, and that's the science, right? I mean, I don't, I don't have any emotions around this. We asked for an engineering report, that's what we got. I don't...
I, I think there are all sorts of engineering reports out there going both ways. That's my understanding, and I've seen some that go the other way.
Well, the presentation that we saw, the recommendation by the presenter was to not permit it.
I know we had an engineer that was paid for by Upper Trinity to come in and give us a presentation. I don't disagree with that. I think there were some other people who provided engineering reports that went the other way.
Who paid for those?
The developers. I, I agree with you.
Yeah, one way or another. My, my concern...
I'm saying we're getting two different stories.
So, so it's a genie-out-of-the-bottle scenario, right? If we allow, if we loosen these restrictions, we allow for the easy wrong thing to be done.
Is Ladona ready to step up and take over then?
Take over what?
Providing sewage for weeks, north of the lake.
This side of the lake.
You have one down there?
Only if...
South side of the lake.
Only if it's in our ETJ and CCN skirt.
This side of the lake is almost in your ETJ.
We, we could, we could exclude your ETJ, if that ma, would make you feel about it. That's easy to do.
Mr. Chairman, my, my concern is not that, or the, again, looking after the county and Upper, and, and Ladona, if we pass this motion, I do not believe Upper Trinity will complete this Lake Shore Plan, and our agreement of anything is to have a completed, approved Lake Shore Plan. And I honestly don't see that happening if we go to two acres. I see them putting us, and I'm sorry, I feel like we're being coerced, and this, this is supposed to be our zoning regulations, but you're telling me, oh, we're not going to accept that, but it's our land, it's our zoning. I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Duckworth, I understand all of that, but I feel like we are providing quality water with OSSFs. And I feel like you are telling me you will not accept what we are proposing, so where do we stand?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I can't say yes to that, because I'd have to go back and ask folks. I can't say, oh, we agree to that.
And you're not gonna approve this.
I, I put up to you, we, we've approved this fi, this amendment for you, but if you have something different, we'll have to come back and...
And he is revising it. Mr. Schimpf is revising it to two acres instead of five acres. That is why I was asking you.
Yeah, we'll have to come back and, and add that. We have to go back and review it, and then...
Let me tell you, we, we're not the Commissioners' Court. Commissioners' Court, we've gotta approve anything we do. You're not, you're not, uh, Upper Trinity, they've gotta approve anything you do. I, I understand that. You've got authority to speak about certain things. Uh, I would say that one of the things that bothers me a little bit is, you, you have yourselves, and I'm saying Upper Trinity, completely exempt from any zoning regulations.
I think that's what it says.
Well, let's see what it says. It says, I think it talks about operations, it talks about, uh, just about anything you guys are doing.
That's the same language that applies to Bodark Lake too, by the way. Whatever that language right there is, as far as any kind of exemption.
I'm not saying it doesn't, but I'm saying, uh, it, it cuts both ways. We, we are giving you exceptions, and there's certain things that we would like to see, and we hope we would, uh, the two acres seems like a compromise, and I understand, I think we could eliminate, Mr. Duckworth, your ETJ, if that would, uh, put a, a little bit of sugar on the, on the vinegar.
Well, there has been some strategic talk about the best way to encourage annexation into the city of Ladona.
Judge, all I'm trying to do is, we've, we've been talking about this since February or March, and we've not made a motion yet, and we're not the governing body that decides. We just pass recommendations on to the Commissioners' Court. I'm just saying, let's send it to the Commissioners' Court. Let them say yea or nay. If they say yea, fine. If they say nay, then we'll be right back here in a month or two, and we'll talk about it again.
We're, and we're happy to also address that, to Commissioners' Court.
Well, you're, you're, we're delighted to have you come and speak to Commissioners' Court.
Do you know what day that's gonna be?
Uh, not at present.
It's the next, when, I've got my phone right there.
I think, I think we're not this, we, we're not this upcoming Tuesday, we're the Tuesday after. And if you ask me what that date is, I could guess, is it the twenty-sixth, what do, what, am I...
Okay, I think I'm in town. I, I have some, out of state travel I've gotta do.
Twenty-eighth, okay. It's, we will put you on the agenda, we'll put this on the agenda if we go ahead. We haven't voted on the motion yet.
All right.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Okay, well, the motion was made by John Ed Schimpf, and it was seconded by Commissioner Fogelberg.
Yes.
Okay, and let's go ahead, assuming there are no further questions, let's go ahead and put it to a vote. Uh, we're recommending this, uh, modification to the Commissioners' Court, and we're gonna go ahead and put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say nay. Uh, Mr. Schimpf?
Aye.
Mr. Fogelberg?
Aye.
Mr. Duckworth?
Nay.
And Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
And I will say aye. So we'll go ahead and push it on to Commissioners' Court. Mr. Duckworth, we, we would be delighted to have you come and try to persuade us or dissuade us. Okay, and I think...
And if everyone here understands, we just make recommendations to the Commissioners' Court, we do not tell the Commissioners' Court what to do.
And I don't think there's any, do we, on Agenda Item Number Five, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Any Additional Changes, Modifications, or Requests That Relate to the Ralph Hall Zoning. And I'm assuming, uh, I'm looking around, and I'm hoping I don't see anybody. My melting's getting in the way, but, uh, no, no additional recommendations, and that, and Commissioners, anybody got an additional recommendation, we can move on.
Did you want to open it to the public, or...
Well, it's, I've looked around at the public, and I think we voted on our motion, and we don't have anybody who's got anything else. When I looked out there, nobody made definitive eye contact with me. Uh, let's go on to Agenda Item Number Six, and Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Shoreline Development Plan, and I've got a copy of it, and I've had a chance to look at it, and I think the person to talk on this, if he's ready, is probably Mr. Janeway.
Well, I was under the impression that's what we voted on.
No.
Yeah.
No, we have not voted on it. We voted on the five-oh, the changes to five-oh-one.
I would say there's nothing ready to vote on it. I'm gonna make a presentation, if I can introduce that...
Open the door so I can breathe?
If you want me to.
You've got Moxles, well, you can probably turn the air off now, 'cause I got, you got a Moxles.
That's true.
I wonder if...
I'll, I'll be right here using it, yes.
I wonder if we cause a draft if we open the other door and...
I don't know if you can open that other door, it might fall off the hinges.
Okay.
Uh, it, I don't think it opens.
Okay.
Uh, Doug Janeway, Upper Trinity Regional Water District, I appreciate the opportunity to bring forward, uh, a plan. Uh, last time we met, um, we had committed and, and maybe been committed to providing a, a draft of this plan for your review, and we have done that. We, we reviewed this plan with our board at their last meeting, uh, and have been authorized to come here to, uh, we did not approve the plan, because this is still a draft plan, and we wanna get your comments on, and that's why it's a draft plan. Uh, our board did, uh, we did make this similar presentation to the board, uh, and they've allowed us to come forward and, and seek, uh, your comments, uh, for consideration. So, uh, we're not, certainly not here to debate any points, but we'll certainly, uh, listen to comments that, uh, you might have. Take notes and, and then go back and figure out what, you know. We might be able to answer some questions, but really it's about taking input from you.
Let me say this, I see it as a good start, and I was impressed with the detail. Uh, you know, there, a lot of thought went into it, and I, I appreciate that. I've probably got twenty-five questions, and the questions start out, and I think there was the question, thirty-five, uh, acres to a boat. I, I noticed you're gonna register boats, to get on the lake. I wonder if they have to be kept near the lake? Uh, you know, uh, how, uh, when we dealt with the, uh, you know, Bodark Lake, they, uh, came up with some sort of equation that was tied to a number of docks, and you are apparently gonna control it by boat registrations. So I assume that there, if you take thirty-five, and I don't know how the actuary's gonna handle this, if you get...
Two hundred boats.
Yeah. You're gonna limit the number of boats that get registered, is that correct?
You know, this is a draft plan, and, and we haven't got all the details worked out, so I'll readily admit that to you. That's on slide, like, number nine or ten of my presentation.
The registration...
So we'll get there.
The registration makes sense. Uh, the boat dock and parking, I think when they did the equations, uh, for, uh, formulations for, uh, Bodark Lake, they, uh, had actuarial tables that showed the number of boats that a parking spot turned into, and they basically said for every parking spot, you had one boat in the water, possible. Then for every dock, it was a lower percentage, and then for the marinas, it was a lower percentage, and the actuaries came up with the exact number of lakes that were going to be on the lake, and they wanted to limit it to X number of boats per hour. And I'm assuming that, looking with the boat registration, you're trying to compress the number of boats out there, and I think that makes perfect sense. I, I, I think in my nightmares, I hear jet skis going by my window. So I, I appreciate that. But, so I, I do wanna comment on that. How, and I guess my question is, how many, uh, at thirty-five, uh, you know, uh, acres a boat, how many boats would go on our lake? I didn't do the, uh...
Mr. Schimpf, he's got...
In the seven-thousand-acre lake.
Okay, so you got two hundred, and I think you were excluding tree areas and some of the other areas, and I hadn't done, uh, haven't, it, on the north lake, we got a lot of tree areas. I don't know how many tree areas you're gonna have down there.
It's on the map, we'll show you that.
Okay. So, uh, that was one of my questions, and I think I now understand how that's working. The other question was, I understand the separation of three hundred feet between the docks, hundred and fifty each side, and, uh, there were some limitations on the size of the decking on the dock, and I understand that, I didn't have a problem with any of that. Uh, what I, my question was, how many, uh, using your three hundred rule, how many docks can go on the lake? And I'm assuming you're having areas where docks can go, and areas where no docks would be allowed. I think you've got those inland fishing inlets or whatever. What, what are we looking at, uh, as far, I think John Ed has answered my question on the number of boats. I guess my next question is, how many docks?
Well, that's one of those situations where we can review that each year and see if it's too crowded or not too crowded, so I don't have an answer about how many docks we're gonna have. I think what you're gonna find is that there, when we get to the point where in the presentation we're gonna talk about that, uh, there's a map that shows you kinda where we think there'll be some docks, and where there maybe won't be some docks, and...
And we are gonna have a marina, or we're not gonna have a marina?
That's up to a commercial, uh, we're not... We're not going to build a marina, but we would entertain it. We'll certainly entertain it, yes, sir.
Okay. You're going to be looking for probably, my understanding, for a marina to be successful, it's got to have slips for at least 300 boats. And if you have too many marinas, they put themselves out of business. They're not like restaurants that draw in more people. So I guess if we're having one marina and a boat equation, do you have slides that are going to show this to us and get us a little more educated on the.
You're several years down the road from a marina. You've got to have water in the lake before they start looking at you. So I don't even know that Bodark has one yet, but they might have people looking at it, but not quite there yet. So we haven't, that's, we're talking about shoreline right now, and we have not, we will entertain those when they come forward, and we'll adjust accordingly as far as how crowded the lake is, how not crowded it is, that sort of thing. We're going to crawl, walk, run. So let's crawl right now.
Let me give you a nail for your boot or your toe. Here's a question. Can the county share in some of those fees that you're charging for the boats and for the docks?
So there's a couple of things that are happening on that, and we're going to kind of skip around in this presentation. We're kind of, but I'll say, I'll say this.
Is that in the presentation?
I mean, I didn't address specifically who shares in it, but I can talk, I can address it here because this question you just asked.
You want to do the presentation first?
I'll answer this question right here. So I'm, I'll talk to, yeah. So the question on that, so number one, the appraisal district will tax these docks, and those will be, you'll get tax revenue from the docks. And so if it's in a city, I'm assuming you get that as well. So I, that's how it works for the, we're going to, we're going to collect the contract to build those docks, and we're going to know how much it costs to build and what they're worth, and we'll be letting the appraisal district know what that is, so they can adequately and accurately evaluate these docks as a piece of the property goes with the associated home property.
How about, how about the boat registrations and the dock permitting fees? Can we share in those?
So the way those will work, of course, is, you know, our business model is that we have to, we have to have people there doing these. We have to have people that are providing, processing the permits, the applications. We have to, we have to hire a software vendor to operate the kiosks and to have the web app that you need to do for all that. All those things cost money. Having said all that, though, to the extent there is, you know, we've talked about the ability for, and Upper Trinity is a very, I'm going to say, for a government organization, we're a pretty generous organization, and we've talked about certainly opportunities where we can provide benefits to the community. And I don't, I don't get into details of that right now, but, but that is, you will be sharing in your tax revenue from those docks. There's your shit, that's your.
Let's talk about it this way. If you're, you know, a boat permit could have a surcharge on it that would go to the county. My understanding is, we're going to have our law enforcement out here. We're going to be involved. We're going to be pulling people out of the water if they're drowning. So it would make sense that some of that money might go to us. And that's a question. I don't need an answer tonight. That's me going, candy, please.
Well, I guess we'll see how this goes, but.
Judge, I'd like to see him go through it and then, and then.
We can ask questions on the back end.
Yeah, and he may not have the answers, but he can leave here with a list of questions.
Very good.
So I know, Judge, you've seen this vision, and I know you don't necessarily agree with it, but we adopted this back in 2019.
I think we're talking about.
And so our vision statement, and our vision statement is our guiding document for us as to how we operate this lake, and that is going to be, it's a special place, a quiet place. It's for the environment, and we're talking about reliable water supply for generations to come. That is our official position on this. Having said that, on the same page of this, is that document, right below it, we also want to then reinforce the fact that while it is important to have a water supply, it's also important to accommodate recreation, economic development, educational opportunities, and for residents and visitors of Fannin County. So we recognize the balancing act we have here to do that. And we'll try to go through it quickly because I know it's getting late. This, this map right here is just going to basically show the acreage of the water at 551, which is 7,600 acres roughly, and then outside the green area is kind of what we call our operational zone outside, outside of the water. So we'd have some other properties around, but we have some lake recharge areas that are kind of down by the federal properties down there. Those are acreages that are kind of outside, and then the next, and you obviously have this map many times, so it's, it's on the wall over here as well. This is the slide I was showing you before, basically showing that we, this is a lake and shoreline management plan. So we're going to talk about what's on the water and also what's on the shoreline. So we have five categories of shoreline classifications. Shoreline Management Zone, which is where you can have, you know, docks or something you'd look at. Upper Trinity Management Zone, that's going to be stuff on our property, frontage, we're going to control that. Repairing Buffer Zone is a requirement of our TCQ permit. It's a strip around the entire lake. It's going to be natural, it's going to stay natural. Tributary Protection Zone, that's going to be on those tributaries going up where you don't really have open water. It's kind of like core land almost. And then you have the Dam Operations Zone, which is going to be safety. You don't want folks up on the dam and getting washed over that with their kayak going over the 30-foot.
You do it underneath, not from the top.
Well, you better, I don't, okay. I'll leave that up to you. Then on the, and on the water service, we got the restricted, which is going to be areas around the dam, obviously buoyed off. The no-wake zone, which is, we're going to do, those are in the, those areas cordoned off so you can. One of the key parts here is that we are aware now of these new wake boats, and so we've got a, we've got a 200-foot separation from the bank to the, where you can have, they've got to be 200 feet away from the, from the lake. And one of the things about the boat registration is, you know, if we find out this happened and we can control the boat registration, and if they keep doing it, they're not going to be on the lake. So you have control, that helps you control it, what's used on the lake. You have Fish and Wildlife have that, that's going to be where the trees are left, and some fishing areas, and of course, open recreation. You see, we're clearing a lot of land out there. That's going to be removing things you might hit when the water's out there, so it's going to be clear, clear sailing.
Sailboats?
We do, yeah. Sailboats, we have the, the, the bridge is high enough for sailboats to go under.
So are the power lines, Judge.
And, and yes, we're, we're working with the Fannin County to get those power lines, even in those tributary zones, by the way.
I had a friend electrocuted when his mast hit one.
Yes, and that's why they have that rule, I believe. That's a Boy Scout situation.
Three Boy Scouts, these places.
Got it, yeah. We're familiar with it and heard about that. So I think maybe this is the map you're talking about, you're kind of irritated about something, but I think we've got to look at this as far as, understand, we took our shoreline management zones and overlaid them onto the zoning. This is actually the future land use map, which is what the zoning would be, would govern how you make decisions on zoning. So it pretty much matches, except the two orange areas. These are half-acre lots and these are half-acre lots in your master plan, but they're not zoned that way right now. They're currently zoned just one acre, and they're currently zoned the yellow, one acre lot. So the areas that you have, and by the way, this plan is posted online, so you don't have to take pictures of it. You can go look at our website.
Where's the 3,000 acre there?
I mean, we got, look how big that mitigation zone is below the dam over there. That's a lot of acres down there. The feds made us do a lot of stuff outside of what we, you know.
No kind of nice port now, though.
Yeah, we got the thing built out there. We'll go over that right now. But so what you see here is, and I don't have my pointer, but what you see here is the gray area behind the, behind the dam, that's our dam operations zone. You see it wraps down both ends of the dam. You see the very dark green areas on those peninsulas coming out? And so those very dark areas, those are going to be public, those are areas where you might have public access, you know, boat ramps. We have our headquarters facility down at 34. We call it the Visitor Center and Lake Office is going to be what we're going to call that, I believe. We have a potential canoe launchway up on Highway 68 that we don't have plans for yet, but that's kind of, we bought that extra property to allow because we were told by the Parks and Wildlife folks, they will be throwing kayaks in the river right there, and you might as well make a plan for it because they're going to be put off the side of the road over there by that brand-new bridge they just built over there. And then we have the light green area up those tributaries. Those are, those are places where we call those tributary protection zones, and then the, kind of the, the other green area on those major points in the open water, those are places where you might see docks a little more, would make sense. Some of the criteria that went into that, and we'll get into it, you know, if you're more than 100 yards away from the water, you're probably going to be a little reluctant to build a dock out there. If you're, docks can only be 120 feet, which deep, or out in the water, which matches what Bodark does. So that's the same what they have. If you're not three feet deep by the time you get to be 120 feet, it's not much use to have a dock out there. So that's one of the things you need to think about, too. So those are some limitations that you look at as you're doing docks. I do want to point out tonight that we are, we just awarded a contract, and we're going to start doing some dirt work on these, the three boat ramps. And so as a little bit of, the boat ramps for those.
Does your jetty show up on there?
Yeah, no pointer. Is that, am I getting them right? I can carry this over there.
That would be real free to have a pointer.
No, I can just.
Are you okay?
This is like Price is Right, remember that? Price is Right. I got it right here. I'm good. No, it's good. You'll be right through it, and I'll be quick. So if you guys, I know fossil days this week coming up this Saturday in like two days.
Yes, sir.
We're just finishing up. We're not finishing up. We're, we pushed through to get, at least we can allow public access on that facility for Saturday. We got people probably out there right now with lights going, probably working on it right now. But if you've seen that down here, that is the trail down, that's our replacement for the fossil park. It'll be, it'll be ready to go for tomorrow for all the folks, the Chamber of Commerce folks, that'll happen. And thanks to our construction folks for making that happen. We work a lot with the Chamber, Mr. McClure. Different folks have to make that happen. We have our headquarters facility right here. We'll be coming to you shortly with the plans for that. We're just starting to go through those. You're going to be, I think you'll be pretty impressed with that facility. It's going to be a multimillion-dollar facility. It'll be open to, for like a visitor center with a place you can have meetings.
Access off of 34?
Access off 34, yes, sir. We've purposely made all of our facilities accessed off state highways.
That's a good move.
To make the county happy because there's no road maintenance on those state highways. Now, so that's off, that's right by the bridge, on the west side of the bridge right there. We got two houses there now. Our, our new visitor center will be kind of right by that little pond over there, kind of off the side a little bit behind that house that's on top of the hill. And then we have, at the end of 2990 about here, we're going to have our Ladonia boat launch right there, a boat ramp, and we're about to do a bunch of dirt work right there. Spent quite a bit of, our board approved a contract to do the dirt work for these three boat ramps. So we have one here at 2990. We have one right here at Flat Prairie, and we have one right here at Bug Tussle. So you go down here to Bug Tussle where the road goes off, we'll have a boat ramp in that location. We also have our fishing jetty. You see right in the fishing jetty area, we've cordoned that off as a natural, natural habitat area so that the people that are just fishing off that jetty don't have to deal with boats whipping through there and all that. So that's a no-wake zone area right there. And then I was pointing out when I go, you got the, the green, it's not, not the most attractive green here, but it shows up on the map. That's where you're likely to have some, some ability for boat docks that you can dock a boat on. We have some eligibility for boat docks in these tributaries. Those would be called more like a fishing dock. You can't pull a boat to it, but you can at least get your property benefit from being close to the water and get down to it. You don't have to walk through the mud. If there's water, you can go out there and throw a line out there from your personal dock. It's not meant for boats to pull up to, but it is, but we wanted to have it on. This is different from the last presentation. We added, we added those boat, those docks because we wanted to recognize that, you know, there's more people can, many people own property of these tributaries, and you still benefit from the, from the lake itself. The, these are just, these other colors, these are commercial, lake commercial, lake commercial down 34. There's a little piece of lake commercial right there on the, down 3390, camera, 3395, the top of the hills, very nice hilltop. And then this is just regular commercial up here at the intersection of 2990 and 1550 at that location. Yeah, I think that's all. Any questions on the map?
2990 and 1550, far enough away from the lake that you'll have places that people can get gas and stuff or not?
Yeah, so, so this is, that's, of course, you've got Ladonia as well. You're coming through Ladonia, there's, you know, there's at least one gas station, might be more coming, Old City, Honey Grove, different places you can get gas.
I just wondered if there was what other areas besides Ladonia? That's the reason for the question. Sorry, I was.
Well, it depends on whoever builds something there, but that'll be a zoning.
But it would be.
Maybe they can revise Bug Tussle again.
Yeah, they bug Tussle out there. So, yeah, any other questions on the map?
Yeah, where is the mud? Is that that yellow place?
The mud's out here.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And that is, they've set up a utility district apart from you.
That's my understanding. They did. They, I mean, you know, the mud, they did that, and that's, yes, sir, they did. That's been approved by, that's been approved by.
Do you know where the extraterritorial zone for Ladonia goes?
We really know.
I don't really know. I mean, I think it goes, I don't, at least goes this far. I don't know on this end how far it goes. Maybe right to here, maybe. They would have to annex in. The Johnson track might have to annex.
They'd annex it.
They're probably outside that, maybe. He's going to need Stewart and Water Service over here.
Maybe.
Okay, any other questions on this map?
No, sir.
This is the main map. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a real busy map, but it puts it all in one place. I could have multiple little maps showing different stuff, but it's like, you look at it, you see everything in one place.
My concern was when I looked at the map and looked at the key at the bottom, it made it look like you guys were taking over zoning for the lake, and you're not, you're telling me you're not doing that.
We are just implementing what our regulations are on top of the zoning map. This is actually not the zoning map. Again, this is the comprehensive plan map. So that just shows you what you guys have adopted as kind of your future land use, although your current zoning pretty well matches this, except those two orange areas that show.
I got you. I just wanted to make certain this wasn't your shoreline plan setting up zoning areas, and you're telling me it's not.
Well, it's not possible for us to take away regulatory authority of the county.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to.
That'd be a new one.
When I looked at it, it raised the question, so that's been addressed.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. So we have. We have, here's the different kinds of permits we would have. So shoreline use permits, which is in the, in the, is residential ones there. You would have docks, or you could have community docks, okay? If you have a subdivision wants to have an HOA lot, they could have a community dock out there. You can have an access path to go down to your dock. You can have an access path to go down to your dock, that's allowable. You would have shoreline protection, which is the, basically along the shoreline to keep them from washing out. And so that would be, we would require on those situations more like riprap or run up on the shoreline, not.
That's the lake's responsibility?
No, that's the individual person building the dock.
It's expensive, too.
It's gonna, well, it's just riprap, we're not putting in a button.
Leaving riprap is expensive.
Well, it's cheaper than a button, it's something.
It is. Wolf heads are costly.
Yes, sir. So we're gonna do that, and that's actually better for the lake because that allows the, allows the water to run up and not bounce back across the lake and make it rough. And then we have another permit, which is a vegetation modification. So again, repairing buffer zone, we call that the no touchy zone, and so we're gonna stay away from that area. But outside of that, remember, we bought from 551 up to 560 vertical elevation and then it goes back. So the area behind that repairing buffer zone, we can talk to you about if you wanted to, some areas you might wanna mow in a rough area, you know, like a tall mowing, not scalping it. Or some other modifications, looking for more natural stuff, more natural plantings, they would bring a plan in, would look at it, and then you can implement that plan in that shoreline area to enjoy your frontage. But it's not, it's not envisioned to be manicured bermuda grass yards down to the lake, because those are actually bad for lakes. General maintenance permit, and that's, I'm sorry, the first one's associated with your dock and your access path. A general maintenance permit is for, if you wanna remove something, some dead trees or some other things, mow it, that sort of thing, those will be allowed there. Special event permits, those are gonna be, you know, if you had something, and I really, I think we even mentioned that, not from private property, but if you wanted to reserve the entire Ladonia, you know, area for your fishing tournament, you would have one of these special event permits to basically use that area for that, because if you, anyway, that's what that would be. Boat registration? We actually have two categories of that, and that would be either for residential use, and by the way, I think we have in our plan, we would allow, I think we proposed 50% discount to Fannick County residents for, you know, for those boat use, not if you live on the lake, but if you're. Coming in from somewhere else, you would get that discount for, for being a local person here in Fannick County.
So you are gonna have daily permits. If I was driving up from, if I was driving up for Dallas and wanted to try bass fishing on the lake, there would be a permit available for me to buy, and that's important to the community, because they may stop and eat as they're coming to town.
I think those are basically five bucks for a daily use on a boat. And then if you have a commercial boat, like if you wanna have the people doing the fishing or the party boats or whatever, that would be a different fee for those guys. They can do a daily, weekly, or yearly. Again, if you do these, and these are, these registrations, we envision it being electronic and kiosk, or you can come to the lake office and also get it there. But that gets you into the, into the area to launch your boat. And if, you know, these are things that you can track. If you have somebody that's breaking the rules and doing things they shouldn't be doing, then we got the computer, we got the computer tracking of all that, who was on the lake, when they're gonna be there. And if they've done something to lose their lake privileges, then they've done something to lose their lake privileges. And then commercial stuff, obviously marinas, those kind of things are gonna be separately agreed to agreements. Those are too large to have some kind of permit. We do permits for most things, but you got a big development or something, that's gonna be, it'll be an actual, sure enough, a concessionary agreement of some sort, where it's much, much more in depth than you would cover on something like this.
Now, Bodark didn't tell the marinas where they need to be, they let the professional operators suggest where they wanted to be and let them acquire the property. And I'm assuming you don't have any designated areas where you expect a marina to be?
Well, we're looking at your zoning, so we see where zoning's commercials, I wouldn't expect the county here to approve anything that's gonna be in a residential area for a marina. That would seem contrary to your zoning. And it seems like we've put all, you put all those areas, we, you put all those areas in those certain areas that seem to be good. So, I mean, I don't know the answer to that question right now, but I would say that, I wouldn't, we try to make the shoreline management plan go along with the zoning. So obviously, you're gonna have boat ramps, you gotta worry about your leeway on the wind or the whatever, so you got multiple things you gotta deal with there. But I wouldn't expect those to be in residential areas, and I don't think people who have their houses would like to have it either. So we're trying to keep those in those commercially zoned areas. These are just some diagrams, I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions on these when people get a chance where you look them in, look them over. I think it's important to think about, on the dock links, they can be 120 feet out into the water from the shoreline. They're gonna connect to the bank at 554 elevation. I know that seems high, it's three feet above the water, but the way our dam operates, it holds water for a while above the 551, it holds up to 553. So we wanna make sure when you build a dock and you got a flood coming in, it's gonna hold that water for a while, your dock's not underwater. We're gonna allow both floating and fixed docks, but this is just an example of separation, how far it goes, identifying what you can do here as far as the docks.
What is your drop limit? The thing that's real bad, I don't wanna say bad, maybe challenging about Bodark Lake is that there is a huge variance in water level. And I'm assuming since you're not letting water out, your water level's gonna be more constant?
Uh, no, sir, our lake is not constant, it'll be, it'll be variable, it'll be dependent on the weather and the water usage.
It'll be going to Nitten County at X miles an hour.
That's a little tiny straw, I think there's, you know. But, yeah, it's a variable width, a variable level lake, and all of our permits have a, you know, bold type. You understand, this is a lake that will drop, and you can, you know, plan appropriately.
What level does it drop to, or is there a bottom out level?
I don't know, but being a bottom out level, I mean, it could, you know, it could get, I've got friends on other lakes and I've seen there's, I've seen the water, you know, long ways from their dock.
Four, five hundred yards.
They're a long ways, I've seen that happen at many lakes, not just others. What's that?
Cedar Creek is like that.
Yeah, it sure is, yeah. You'll get them, I mean, that's, these are all water lakes, so you have to, that comes with the territory in these lakes. The important part here is that we're gonna work with developers, and that's why we need the development plan is to. You know, separate, you've seen there's separation between docks of 150 to the propylene, and I say propylene, it's an extended propylene or projected propylene. So it's 300 feet between those docks, so.
You know, up on Bodark, we have our ramps, and some of those docks aren't usable 20, 30% of the time. They're either underwater or the water's down so far that you couldn't get into a boat from them.
I think we're, I think we got a couple of ramps at 535 maybe, and then maybe another one's a little bit higher, around 540 or something, but, you know. And I mean, ultimately, yes, if it gets that low, you don't wanna be out there tooling across the lake anyway, you're gonna hit something, you know, there's stuff, you start seeing, you know, when you get below a safe level, you gotta figure out when to close the lake. This is an example of a fixed fishing dock, some of those tributary areas, you wanna be able to get to the water, enjoy it like anybody else, not meant for bringing a boat up to it, that type of deal. There's a little bit on a fishing dock, you got some smaller tributary, you can come in a little smaller separation across coves. You can have, we will allow covered docks on the docks there, and they just need to have not enclosed sides in those docks. And I think we have some regulations about muted colors, earth tones, that kind of thing, no bright red, purple.
Boat lift, lift them out?
Yeah, if you can, yeah.
If you can't have a party boring out on that though.
No, I mean, it's, it's, no sides on it, yeah, no sides. Can you get pontoon boats in there? Yeah.
I tell you, you can have a party if you got your pontoon.
I guess you could. And then this just shows two examples, one's a floating dock, one's a fixed dock, that's all that is. This one's just showing the amount of riprap you go out either side of the dock, just, we didn't go to the propeller, just kinda took a, you know, 10 feet either side of it. You don't have to do the whole front end of your lot, you can do just around the dock itself. There's no reason to go kinda beyond your construction area.
You may end up with washout on either side of that rock riprap if you've got a lot of traffic.
Well, those are things we look at for our annual, or whenever we're doing our inspections, those would be things we, hey, need to correct that area, and you might have to address that for your next renewal. So this is where, you know, I can see we have some discussion on this one, but this is what we're planning on doing here. So we have centralized wastewater system, if you want a development that has docks, you need to do that. Obviously, it does not apply to individual homes that are not part of development, this is just for subdivisions. They need to have a stormwater management plan, so we can't just have the roads and ditches just run off in the lake. They need to have appropriate basins, which are already in the, they're already in the master, your comprehensive plan, they're already there. We have some more details in this plan, which again is posted on the web, our website. I did send it to Rose, to, she might be working with Dustin maybe or somebody to get it up, I don't know if it's there, I didn't see it while ago, but we have it on our.
I will take a look and see.
Yeah, the whole plan, this whole plan that you have is on the website. And then, so docks will be a primary shoreline management zone, they can also be in the tributary zones for the fishing docks.
I wanna make sure everybody understands what this is. This is allowing OSF requirements to be placed on neighborhoods that wanna have a common dock over the water. You could have 600 homes, and they're going to be subject to this particular bit of regulation. And, you know, so it can extend out. If you want access to the water and you're in a neighborhood, you're going to have to comply with the zoning, you know, regulation that they have in their shoreline management plan, or you don't get to have a dock. So it's problematic, and it probably eases some of your concern, Mr. Duckworth, about how these neighborhoods are gonna plug into you or not.
Oh, I mean, make sure it's clear, but don't leave it right there. It applies to, you know, community docks, it also applies to individual docks in a subdivision. So it could be either way, the whole subdivision, whether it's the individual dock in that subdivision, or the community dock in that subdivision. When they build that subdivision, they need to come down and sit at the table with us and go over their drainage plan, their water retention plan, their sewer plan. Those are the main things we need to watch out. Also, we need to watch out where they, how they lay their locks out, because those, sometimes you can do a pie shape and it messes up somebody else. You gotta be able to have, it's not a first come, first served, like I've seen other places. It's gonna be, we're gonna designate what your, what your projected side yard is, so you know where your dock's gonna be. You don't have to go out and try to beat your neighbor, get in his first, so he, he don't get one.
I just want everybody to understand that, and I think we may have some questions from the audience.
I think we got some.
Did my commissioners ask some questions first?
I may, oh, on this slide right here? Or, my last point on this slide right here is that.
Go right here.
Yes, sir, the last point on this slide is that much like a garage is typically in zoning, a garage, something like that is an accessory use to a residence. Same thing with docks, they're gonna be accessory use to a residence, in other words, you don't have docks out there with no house. So that'll be something you have, you need to get a house built so you can have a dock.
Yeah, this, to me bothers me a little bit, because it's extending your zoning out into the county, and that's a little problematic. I want you to be aware of that problem for.
We're not controlling the use, we're just saying conditions on to get a dock.
Well, you're, if you want, let's say I've got a neighborhood with 50 houses, and the one guy who wants a dock is tied into a sewage plant. Does that mean he can't have it because his other neighbors aren't willing to do that?
Well, it's a subdivision by subdivision, so that subdivision needs to know.
The answer's, if one guy in the subdivision won't go along with the plan, or he doesn't go along with the plan, or he does go along with the plan, he's got a dock, all of a sudden that whole area, which might be 20 square miles, is subject to your zoning regulations on sewage.
I think that might be a little bit of a farfetched idea, because you're gonna have, you're in a subdivision, we've already met with this subdivision developer to develop the infrastructure. So there's not gonna have the option, when the infrastructure's going in, the homeowner's not there. So he's gonna buy a lot, either has septic or has a centralized collection, that's the way it's gonna be set up. So we can address that individually.
I want everybody to understand that, and I think I have the concept, but I wanted, I like to have stuff out in the open. And I guess, we talked about your last element now, or are we ready to?
Yeah, I think I've got some more, another slide coming up, if you want me to get through it.
One question, when you say we, do you mean the person, the people that have the district, the wastewater district, or do you mean opportunity?
When you say we what, about which side?
The dock, you know, having to connect to a waste.
Yeah, yeah, so opportunity is gonna be the ones that issue these permits.
Okay, so the permit for the dock, though, is dependent upon the wastewater system. But the wastewater system is not held by opportunity, it's held by?
It is not held by opportunity or Govermud either. I mean, it's held by the developer who inputs that subdivision in, he builds that system, and he establishes the mud, then will collect the money to do that, or they will connect into the existing system out there.
But it is a separate entity from?
Let's go ahead and, we've got a question out there, we may wanna take it before we go on to the next slide.
Okay, could you please come up?
We need you to come up to the podium and let us have your name.
Name and address.
We're trying to take minutes and reserve order.
Okay, my name is David Culler, 2009 North State Highway 121 in Bonham. I'm just saying, if I understand this correctly, even if we have, if a developer came in and said, okay, we'll go with the five acre compromise that they're offering, if they agreed not to, so they're saying we could have septics in those, we would still not be able to get boat docks unless we put in a centralized system.
Not what he said.
Yes, it is.
No, it ain't. Let me clarify then, this is just a PowerPoint. So you had to read the actual plan, so we're reducing all the. Must be a mothling.
Yeah, it's a hazard.
They're bugs.
They're protein.
So we've reduced the plan down to some bullet points here. So obviously, if we're, if our plan calls for five acre lots are exempt, they haven't approved that yet. So if they, if they did that, then yes, that would be obviously part of our plan. You have five acre lots, yes, you're not required, as long as you meet the requirement.
Okay, well, is it gonna be the zoning committee's requirements or your requirements?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, I'll say this, we control the docks, but obviously, if you're, we're gonna work, we've stated we're gonna work with you guys, so.
If we pass something and you agree to it, two acres for example, then they could have a dock.
I mean, we're, yeah, if we're agreeable to it, I mean, but that's, that's our board has to do it though, so. Yeah.
But the way, the way I understood their rule initially, the way the rules set up, is if you've got 500 homes, and even if they've got 300 foot on the water, you meet that, if you're, don't have the right sewage system in that development, you can't get a dock.
Yeah, so you're gonna, you're going to, you know, if you meet the requirements, I'm assuming we're gonna meet, you're gonna get the dock. I mean, it's, you know, it's not, I mean, again, we're down, this is a draft plan.
And we're discussing.
And you're, and you're making, you're making changes right now to the zoning, and so we didn't draft this plan according to what just happened here, so.
We're there, you cured our concern.
Okay, we're not gonna be, I mean, that would be, you know, anyway, we're pretty reasonable people as far as, you know, if you got something that's proved and whatever. Now, it may be, we may not agree with you, if you, if you decide it's uneconomic or something, we may or may not agree, but I think that's when the developer needs to come forward and figure out with both the opportunity and the county what they're gonna be doing. So we, I don't believe, just like, you're not giving up your zoning authority, we're not giving up our right to protect the lake. I mean, we both have our rights, we're gonna protect, and that's the easiest way to do it. But we're reasonable people, I mean, that's, you know, that's what we are, so. I think you can ask the people we've dealt with, the city or, you know, other folks, so, you know. Okay, and this is a kind of a repeat, I did fix one of the points here. So this just shows the areas, so we got fishing, obviously, pretty much all the entire lake. You know, bird, you know, duck hunting, bird hunting, that's a Parks and Wildlife regulated activity. Swimming, open recreation areas, you know, you can't just swim across the lake, you gotta be in there a boat, that type of deal, just safety. Boating, pretty much in all areas except for, well, pretty much all areas unless it's prohibited, like dam protection or some other area buoyed off. Off-road vehicle use is prohibited on the shoreline anywhere, no off-road vehicles anywhere on the shoreline on our property. Camping, we don't have any facilities yet, but we would entertain if somebody, you know, wanted to build one or something, as far as like a park or something like on one of our, around our boat ramps or something like that. But we're not, we're not building them, but we don't have any right now. It's not prohibited, but it would be prohibited until we had a facility for it. You couldn't just go out and have a tent on the side of the highway on our property or something, it needs to be in an actual location.
Go out there and put about 10.
Well, I mean, people will do it, people will do it, I see lots of them.
Letting that to fossil park for overnight camp?
Oh, that's actually outside of this thing here, but we don't have anything there now, I don't, we don't have an overnight camp in there.
No fire pit.
No.
Pavilion planned, correct?
Well, pavilions, the concrete's poured right now, we don't have the top on it yet, but we have the pavilion concrete poured. There's no places down there where we have, I mean, they could go, there's an RV park over here, there's places locally that you could go, you know, camp. That's not really a setup for camping down there. And then fireworks, we, you need a permit, I'm not sure we'd even, I don't know, even have it, but those are expensive, so the actual organized plan, so. Let's, Chamber of Commerce wants to do it, then, or somebody, I don't know, a city, or those are kind of things like that.
You've put a lot of thought into this shoreline plan.
This didn't happen overnight, by the way.
Well, I can tell, and it, there's a lot of questions that need to be resolved by the group, which would, you know, try to come up with something that's effective. It's like the, trying to restrict the number of boats, how is that best accomplished in trying to maintain law and order on the lake? I'm assuming, and that leaves me with my last question, are you looking to the sheriff's department and the constables to augment the law enforcement of the lake? Are we looking at the need to have a boat out there? Right now Ladonia doesn't have a police force, I think they're, they're.
They're contracted police force.
Yeah, so I guess my, yeah, my question is, how are you gonna get law enforcement of the lake? Are you looking to the county to help provide that?
So our contract calls for the county to provide law enforcement like they normally would do. We're open to talking to you about, you know, needs of the county. We, as we've talked about this offline, or we've talked about this, we met with the sheriff, we met with the constable, we met with Parks and Wildlife, you know, so we have a relationship with everybody. We're open to hearing what you have to say, what you have to offer, what you need.
I think some of the fees would help us augment our.
Can't say that, but I, you know, that seems complicated.
Are y'all setting up someplace for the Parks and Wildlife to have a headquarters on your lake?
Uh, we don't, we don't have a headcor, we would have. Oh, we don't, we, we don't have a headcor, we would have a secure area, that's gonna be primarily behind the dam for that, so it'll be like a, you know, in a secure area. Yes, sir. We do, we do have, we have, we have the capability and the, and the intention to accommodate law enforcement.
I'm gonna ask the privilege, gentlemen.
It won't be, I mean, we don't have, we don't have, uh.
I will. I'll be right after.
We don't have like, we didn't build dedicated offices and that sort of thing, but we have conference rooms, we have accommodations.
Well, we could have our meeting, whether I can do.
These meetings? We'll do those up at the, we do, we do those at the lake office if you want to. We'll have a big, and it'll be a nice room, big screens and all that sort of thing, and.
Maybe get in rush because of the temperature and.
Sometimes it helps.
Look, well, you have a, a private boat ramp for lake operations and/or for law enforcement.
We have two of those. One of them is by the dam, and it's gonna be to the deepest part of the lake, probably. It's actually already been built, and, and then we have another one, I think it's just a, we might have a boat ramp there, too, at our, at our lake office, but that's just for, for, it's not a public one. It's just for our use. So we have, we have the ability to put a boat in there at the lake office, and we have the ability to put, uh, law enfor, we can put law enforcement in either location. I believe there's one there. I don't, don't hold me to it, but I think there's one there, but I'll have to. There's at least a dock there they can dock up. They might have to put in down there on the other end. Yeah, I'm just thinking now. I actually remember seeing that plan, but I know we have one at the dam, and I know we have a dock at the lake office where you can pull up to it.
There's a slip at the dam for a boat?
Yeah, there'd be a slip for law enforcement, yeah, for us and our operations. Yeah, that'll be down there.
The Parks and Wildlife would be, Parks and Wildlife, that would need.
Who we're working with, yeah, that'd be, that'd be, that'd be a place away from the public.
Because that's with them having to actually patrol the lake, that's.
Yeah, that's away from the public. They can put in any, they can put in any, in any place they need to. I've seen them put in ponds. They just drive out and, they're, they're not, they, they put in anywhere. But we'll have multiple places they can go. If they need to be somewhere private, in a secure area, that'd be down behind, we'll have a gate down, you know, 3645.
Interesting that they have access like that. That's, you've got to figure out how to pay them.
Yeah, and, and just that, well, I mean, we've just awarded a contract to rebuild County Road 3640 from Highway 34 over to 3635. And then we're about to start excavating 3645 to get it to grade, so we can put the, the road bed in there, and we've been maintaining that the whole time, so. But it'll eventually be, I believe, I know it's gonna be rocky for right now until the dam's all done, but, so, yeah. Any, any other questions?
Thank you for your time, and we're pleased that we got a draft shoreline plan. That's your, you've advanced the token three spaces.
If, if you have comments, that's our next step, because it won't be open forever, so. We'll, we'll take your comments and.
We'll be making comments, and our, the rest of the commissioners may have comments to make also.
I gave him all the.
I think we invite the public, if they look at it online, they'll send in a comment that they do that as well.
And Ms. Hopkins has comments.
You have good comments, if you want.
Well, come, come ahead.
Well, my, my first comment would be that I have to question if adding OSSF regulations to subdivisions is not an overlap of opportunity's jurisdiction, as if they're more stringent than the counties. It's an override of the regulatory authority of the county. If we all agree on the two acres, I can give you page numbers of the things that need to be changed, but one of my main concerns is on page 45, 8.2, is required to install centralized sewage collection and treatment in accordance with the wastewater master plan. So the definition of a package plant is a decentralized sewage system. So if you're open to package plants, then you'll need to change everywhere that says centralized sewage system. And asking for an OSSF to be designed for future connection to a centralized sewage system is probably not a possibility for an OSSF. It would be something that would be approved by TCEQ. That's pretty much it.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, we'll wait for Commissioner Fogelberg to come back. And I think we can probably go ahead and talk about, we don't have to have a motion on it, but talk about possible times to meet. Or when, what do you recommend for our next meeting, Doc?
My phone's being used as the recorder, so I believe that it's supposed to be the second Thursday of the month?
That would be the 14th of November.
13.
The 13th. 13.
November 20th.
That's the third, third one. Is it the second or the third?
The 13th is the second.
20th is the third. Isn't it the third, third?
It's the third.
That was just as my.
So are we looking at the 20th then, gentlemen? Is that, okay.
Pretty close to.
Um, that's, that's the week before.
Okay, well, then we need a motion.
So moved.
We've had a motion.
Second.
And we've got a second. The motion's by John Ed Schimpaw, and the motion is by Jan Johnson. Let's go ahead and vote to set the meeting for that particular date, the 20th, okay, of November. Let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. John Ed Schimpaw.
Aye.
Kurt Fogelberg.
Aye.
Mr. Duckworth.
Aye.
And Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
And the chairman says aye, motion passes. I think we're, reached the most important item of the.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
At night, we've got a motion to adjourn. We got a second. Commissioner Johnson has made a motion. Commissioner Schimpaw has seconded it. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Schimpaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Fogelberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Judge says aye, motion passes, and I want to.